Good evening. I am David Elias. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Present, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public, which stands one nation, unified, equal, for the free and justice of all.
Order, arms. Right, face, hold, order, march.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Slaven. I'm the president of Mass General Hospital. So first, please help me thank the Revere High School Junior ROTC for presenting the colors to us this evening. So I've been asked to serve as the master of ceremony for this prescription drug abuse town hall meeting, and it's truly an honor for me to be here, and truly an honor for Mass General to partner with Revere and the surrounding communities in so many important ways. Your presence tonight speaks to how important this issue is in our Commonwealth and in this region, and I hope we all come away from this evening more informed and more committed to making a difference on this issue than ever before. At Mass General, we have a deep commitment to providing top quality of health care to the residents of Revere and the surrounding communities. And one thing the community members have told us loud and clear through our community health needs assessment and the health statistics back up the views of the members of the community is that substance abuse disorders are a major healthy issue in this region of our country, this region of our state. And as a local health care provider, we want to do more than simply treat the overdoses in our emergency room or treat the cirrhosis, the liver disease that comes years after the onset of this chronic illness. We want to work with you to try to head off this illness at a very early stage, prevent it altogether, and we're committed to working with you in efforts to do just that. Unfortunately, two of the people who we had hoped to be here tonight are not going to be able to join us. One is Senator Markey, who is voting on this trivial issue having to do with the debt ceiling and reopening the federal government. So Ed is down in Washington casting an important vote for all of us. And similarly, Speaker DeLeo couldn't be with us this evening, but we are very fortunate in this state and in this part of the state to have such great leadership committed, among other things, to community health. So please help me thank both of them in absentia. I did want to recognize a number of elected officials who are with us this evening. In alphabetical order, we have Brian Arigo, who is a city councilor here in Revere. Brian, if you could raise your hand, thank you for being with us. Linda Calla, who serves on the town council in Winthrop. Linda, thank you. John Correggio, also a city council here in Revere. Michael Ferrante on the school committee in Revere. Dan McGuire, school committee, Revere. From Senator Markey's office is Patrick Lally. Patrick, thank you so much for being here. Charles Patch, city council, Revere. And then we're fortunate to have from Senator Petroselli's office Donna Carney. Donna, thank you for being here. We also have Kathy Ann Reinstein, our state representative from Revere. You'll be hearing later in the program, at the very end of the program, from your own Daniel Rizzo, the mayor of Revere, but we can welcome him twice. Donna Wood Pruitt, school committee, Revere. And last but not least, Anthony Zambudo, who serves on the city council here in Revere. So the purpose of this evening and this program is to raise awareness about how prescription drug abuse is currently affecting this country, our state, and this region. This part of our state, the communities just north of Boston, has really been hard hit by prescription drug abuse. And in the case of powerful painkillers known as opioids, prescription drug abuse, as you know, can lead to addiction to heroin and other street drugs. Certainly, families have lost loved ones, employers have lost potential workers, and communities have lost valued citizens. Substance use abuse disorders hurt local economies, they threaten public safety, and they also drive up health care costs. And so if we can do something about this issue, and we are working together, certainly can and will, we can make a major difference in the lives of the people who suffer from this disorder and also improve the communities in which we all live. So before we go deeper into this conversation, I'd like to acknowledge three of the key organizations that helped put this event together. The first and the funding for this event was made possible by the Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America, CADCA is the abbreviation, a national membership organization for coalitions across the country that are working to make their communities safe and drug-free. And some of this funding was made possible through a grant from Pfizer. Second organization to help make this possible was the Revere Cares Coalition, which is a program of the MGH Center for Community Health Improvement that aims in a number of ways to make Revere a healthier community. And the third organization is the Winnis-Cimit Regional Opioid Collaborative, a collaborative of Revere, Chelsea, Saugus, and Winthrop that was formed this year through a grant from the Mass Department of Public Health Bureau of Substance Abuse Services to fight opioid overdoses. So please help me thank those three organizations for making tonight's program possible. So we're going to kick off the program tonight by hearing from General Arthur Dean, who is the chairman and CEO of CADCA, one of our sponsoring organizations tonight, who's going to speak to you about prescription drug abuse and how it's affecting this country and provide an overview of some of the best practices that he's seen communities use to address this issue. General Dean became the chairman and CEO of CADCA in 1998, and before that, he spent 31 years in the US Army. You'll see, he looks very young, so he must have been born in the Army. And he reached the age of, reached the grade of Major General. He currently serves as the chairman of the Multi-Jurisdictional Counter Drug Task Force Training Advisory Committee and is a member of the Washington DC and State of New Jersey Prevention Councils. He received his undergraduate degree at Morgan State, a master's degree in management from Central Michigan University, and he also was a graduate of Stanford's Advanced Management Program in the US Army's War College. And you may remember him because in 2010, he came here to Revere to present, to present the Revere Cares Program with CADCA's 2009 Coalition of the Year Award. And so please help me welcome General Dean back to Revere.
My pleasure. Thank you. Well, good evening to all of you. It's great to be in your great state, in your wonderful community, and it's my pleasure to be here. If, if you would bear with me for a moment, I think there's a woman in the audience that I want to give my thanks to for being such a community outstanding leader. Many of you are as well, but Kitty Bowman is an example of the counter coalition leader that we would love to have if I could clone you all across the United States. So congratulations to you for your great leadership, Kitty. Congratulations. So on behalf of CADCA, my board of directors and the wonderful staff that I have back there, and I do have a colleague with me from CADCA who serves as my communications manager, Natalia Martinez Duncan here up front, and she's been helping us put on these counter town hall meetings across the country. So thank you Natalia for that as well. Appreciate it. Thank you. But as you've heard already, and I'm sure you already know, that just the fact that you are all here, you are part of the solution. And you're part of the solution that's going to help this country address what is now an epidemic. As labeled by the Center for Disease Control out of Atlanta, Georgia, just a few years ago, declared that the misuse and abuse of prescription medicines is an epidemic. And as I travel the country and see the overdoses that are taking place and the difficulties that families and communities are encountering, I would totally agree with that. But as you know, CADCA represents community coalitions. And community coalitions are a multi-sector organization that brings all of the sectors together in a community to work strategically and holistically together using the latest evidence practices to solve community problems. And my heart really feels wonderful to see all of the sector representatives from this area of the country here. You are an example of an outstanding coalition. We work with more than 5,000 of them across the United States, and we are now working internationally as well on five continents in eight, 18 different countries. Our training is now being conducted in eight different languages. We just had a team this week return from one of the former Soviet Union countries, the Stans, and we had a team return this week from the country of Iraq as well. And I have a team right now in the Philippines. So we're taking the same concept, making it culturally appropriately and using it in those countries, and those communities are receiving it with great enthusiasm. So we're very proud of that. But this evening is, is an important one, and it's a part of the movement across the country where coalitions are bringing together people to build, to strengthen, and to forge solutions. This town hall is one of several being held across the United States in recognition of National Medicine Abuse Awareness Month, some that CADCA took to Congress a few years back, and they have renewed their proclamation on annual basis every since. So we use October to spotlight this issue, and we are delighted to be in this part of the country doing just that. So CADCA members have been working on this complicated problem now for more than a decade. In fact, we had our first press conference on this issue in 2001. It wasn't yet seen and recognized and appreciated for the problem that it is, but we're pleased that it has the national attention that it deserves, and we started working this issue back in 2001. There have been numerous town hall meetings all across the country. I'm going to talk a little later about all of the publications that we've been able to prepare on this issue, and we are delighted that, that people are concerned now. But most of you, I'm sure, just like me, you know family members who live in chronic pain and who in fact have a legitimate need and is necessary for them to have these pain medicines. But we also know that too many people, and many of them family members as well, are abusing these medicines, and that's so unfortunate. I was just visiting a couple of weeks ago Fort Bragg, North Carolina. We're going to start doing some work with the active army, and they have a serious problem with soldiers abusing these medicines as well. But back in 2011, just a couple of years ago, the Institute of Medicine reported that approximately 100 million adults suffer from chronic pain. And as a result of that, they add to the nation's cost for health care some $635 billion. So this is a serious issue that requires a lot of money that results in a loss of productivity. We also just recently got a study, it's brand new, only a couple of weeks ago, from an organization in Washington called the Trust for America's Health. And they did a study on the misuse and abuse of medicines just recently, and they found that prescription drug costs the country an estimated $55 billion as a result of misuse, not those that are using it for medical purposes, $55 billion a year in lost productivity, medical costs, and criminal justice costs. So this is brand new data that just was released in the last couple of weeks. So we need to get this issue in balance because there is no doubt that prescription drug abuse is negatively impacting individuals, impacting families and communities, and creating significant challenges for all of us in order to deal with it. So whether you are addressing this challenge here in Boston, in the metropolitan area, out in one of the rural areas, on a Native American reservation, we believe that the strategies that will lead to success are similar and basically the same. First of all, we believe that a multi-sector community coalition is necessary in order to carry out these strategies, and that's why we train our coalitions to implement evidence-based strategies using a combination of strategies that are going to impact the entire community and all of the residents of that community. And we're talking about environmental policies and practices that are going to get at ensuring that the right policies are in place, that are going to try to prevent and reduce the problem, not encourage or support the problem, that the right practices are taking place, whether they be in law enforcement, in the health system, in the school system, wherever, to ensure that the right systems are there, and trying to impact and affect the attitudes of all of the citizens of the community. And we have a serious problem in this country in that attitudes about not just prescription drug abuse and misuse, but illicit drugs in general are softened. And we know that if we don't have strong disapproval, then use rates will continue to rise and go up, and that's the challenge that we have. So as a nation, we have a multi-pronged approach under the Office of a National Drug Control Policy. It's called ONDCP, a part of the White House. We worked with them a few years back to publish something called the RX Drug Abuse Prevention Plan, and, and that was the first national plan that came out to address this issue. And we continue to support that plan and to help them, but we do need better communications, we need better coordination, and we need better funding. So we've been pushing seven change strategies. I'll quickly go over those for you now and then move on because I want to hear our esteemed panel. The, the first strategy that we believe is important is the expanded use of effective prescription drug monitoring programs. You know, we have one now in every state except for one. They're all not as effective as others, but the intent is to try to make sure that we know from an electronic perspective who is quote-unquote "doctor shopping" so that we can reduce the, that, that problem. Secondly is to enhance the education and training of medical and dental professionals in properly prescribing protocols. And we have a lot of doctors in the office, in the audience tonight. I'm sure we're going to hear more about that, but that is an issue, and I know that that community is very concerned about that. Is to raise the general public awareness about the dangers of prescription drug abuse as well as the proper ways to store and to dispose of them. You know, as a side effect, excuse me, let me, let me just digress for a moment. The problem has gotten so bad that realtors are saying to you now, if you have your house on the market and you open your house for an open house, which is what a lot of people do when they're selling their homes, you now have to lock up or clean out your medicine cabinets because people will come to see your, your house, not that they are interested in buying it, but they're interested in taking medicines from your medicine cabinet. That's how bad the problem is. So we really got to be very concerned about that. Enhance the opportunity for prescription drug takeback and other large-scale medicine disposals. We work with the Drug Enforcement Administration back in Washington, and they've had several semi-annual takebacks, but we think all communities deserve a place where their medicines can be dropped off, properly safeguarded, and disposed of, and it's something that we think is important, and citizens, I believe, will be supportive. Support increased law enforcement and legal remedies to close down pill mills. A couple of years back, I went on, the chief of police is here, I know, and he will fully understand. I went on what they call a ride-along with the law enforcement in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and we saw these pill mills where people were going in one door to get a prescription and out the other door with bags and bags of these medicines that they were going to not use. They were taking them to sell or do something with them. Fortunately, the state of Florida did implement a prescription drug monitoring program and has began to close some of those pill mills down. Then I've been working with your Congressman Keaton here, is to require manufacturers to create abuse deterrent formulations of commonly abused prescription painkillers so that it's more difficult for them to be abused. So when you crush them, you don't get the effect that you would if you used them properly. And then we think seven would be to expand the number of federal-funded drug-free community coalitions, like the one here in Revere and the other communities that are represented tonight, so that we can have more training and more activity taken place and more data-driven strategies in communities. So at CADCA, we are grateful to provide training and support to the Revere Care Coalitions and the other coalition represented, and many others like them. We know that coalitions represent around the country these issues. We know that they are not only saving taxpayers' dollars through their efforts, but they are in fact saving lives, and that's really what it's all about. We want communities to be safe, we want them to be healthy, we want the citizens of those communities, particularly the young people of those communities, to grow and learn without being negatively impacted as a result of not just prescription drugs and the misuse and abuse, but all substance abuse issues. So CADCA is here to support you in every step that you take. Know that you can count on us. I think I had a couple of slides. The first one is up now, that we have a prescription drug abuse prevention toolkit. It's available from, from CADCA. We put it together. It, it uses the seven strategies I talked to you about, and it gives coalitions the opportunity to implement those strategies and examples to do that and the data necessary to do that. We've actually created an online course that's free. Any of you can go onto our website and, and take this online course on prescription drug misuse and abuse. We would invite you to, to do that. And we've created all types of publications, materials, and others to support this issue. Also, you can find many of CADCA's medicine abuse prevention resources on our website, which is www.cadca.org. And we also have created another site called preventionrxabuse.org as well, so you can find information. I know many of the people here that represent the many coalitions that are in the room and the communities here have been through our trainings. We just had one recently in Austin, Texas for about 2,000 people. Our national one will take place in February 2014 in Washington. I hope many of you will join us there, and it's called The Power of the Movement. We want to show our communities and citizens the power and the strength of our movement to address these very difficult challenges that we have. And I can think of no better way than this town hall meeting to show and to present to the citizens of this great area the importance and the concern that you have. And finally, I want to invite you to connect with us through our various social media channels. You know, we are into Facebook and Twitter and YouTube and all those kinds of things that my daughters had to teach me about because I didn't grow up doing that. They got me tweeting, believe it or not. They have me doing all those kinds of things, but it's important. So you can like us on Facebook, you can be a part of the movement. We even have an electronic newsletter that is free, that anyone can go onto our site and sign up and receive. So we want you to connect with us and stay informed. But again, I want to thank the leaders of this community. I'm impressed with so many significant leaders that are here, the citizens that are concerned, and the coalition members that are here as well. I look forward to hearing from our esteemed panel as they talk about these issues forward. It's something that we all must give our very best, and I believe our best will help our communities. Are we going to stop it completely? Probably not. Can we have a positive impact? Absolutely. Research and data tells us that, and we look, I look forward to working with you as we move into the future. It's great to be with you. Thank you for the opportunity to spend some time with you, and I look forward to our panel. Thank you.
Before introducing our panel, I wanted to recognize a couple of other officials who are with us this evening. I wanted to recognize Barbara Bishop, who serves as a member of the staff in Speaker DeLeo's office. Barbara, if you could please raise your hand to be Also have somebody well-known to Mass General, and that's Carol Ty from the Revere School Committee. Carol. And then Chief Delahanti from the Winthrop Police Department. Chief, thank you for being Chief McQuade from the Saugus Fire Department. Thank you for being here. And, and then finally, Jim McKenna, the Winthrop Town Manager. Jim, thank, thank you for being So I am now pleased to invite our three panelists up on the stage, and if they would please come up here and take a seat behind their respective name tag. And while they're doing that, and before I introduce them, I just want to mention that you all should have received index cards as you came into the auditorium. Please complete them with any questions or comments that you have. We will, the staff will sort of pick them up during the course of the evening, and we will use them during we will use them during the question-and-answer period. If you want to make sure you get an answer to your question, be sure to write your name on the card, because if we can't get through it during the program, somebody will follow up with you afterwards. So put your name on it if you absolutely, positively want to get that comment addressed. So here are our panelists, and I'll start from the left, your left. And first person is somebody very well-known to me, and that's Dr. Erica Wile, who is the Director of Primary Care at Mass General Hospital and has been on our faculty, on our medical staff, for 13 years. He is well-known to this community because he has served as Chief of the Internal Medicine Practice at the MGH Revere Health Center and has also served as the Chair of the Revere Board of Health. He has been involved in a multitude of educational, primary care, and community-based initiatives on the community, hospital, statewide, and national levels. He was formerly the co-chair of the Revere Cares Opiates Task Force and has also chaired our Clinical Policy Committee at Mass General. Erica will present on current conditions in local communities. He'll then be followed by Hillary Jacobs, who we're fortunate to have with us tonight from the Department of Public Health of the state of Massachusetts, where she is the Director of the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services. She is a licensed clinical social worker and a licensed drug and alcohol counselor here in Massachusetts. She has worked in the addictions field for the past 30 years and has authored an online course on the application of motivational enhancement to older adults with substance abuse disorders. And she also received the Dole Niswander Award for Outstanding Contributions to Opiate Treatment from the American Association for the Treatment of Opiate Dependents. So she will present on the statewide initiatives to address this issue of the misuse of opioids and other prescription drugs. And then finally, we are very fortunate to have with us tonight Pam McDonald, who is a nurse in recovery who will share her own personal story of prescription drug addiction and recovery. She is a Chelsea resident and has been in recovery for 22 years. So thanks you all for being here, and we will start with Eric.
So, Dr. Slaven, thank you very much for the opportunity, and thank you all for having me. As was mentioned, I'm a primary care physician in Revere, first and foremost. I've been here for 13 or 14 years, and it gives me unique insight into the community. While I'm not a resident of Revere, my wife would probably make the argument that I spend enough time here that I in fact am a resident of Revere. I'm also a primary care, the chief of the primary care division at Mass General, and so I have an insight into what it means to actually practice in our communities, but also I have an insight in what it means to oversee the group of people that practice in all of our communities. And then last but not least, I'm, have been, and still am the Chair of the Board of Health in this particular community. And so I've been privileged to have the opportunity to interface with many people around many issues that pertain directly to the health and well-being of the communities in which we all live. So why are we concerned about this? I know that we've talked about this, and it's a little bit obvious, but I wanted to throw a couple of statistics out to you all with regards to prescription drug abuse, prescription drug misuse. They've actually changed it. It's no longer abuse, it's misuse, just so you know. How many deaths occur daily in the United States secondary to prescription drug overdoses? Guess, anybody? Fifty. Fifty deaths a day in the United States. And the rate of overdoses has quadrupled in the last 14 years. And now, it's actually the number-one cause of accidental death in the United States. So that when I was a medical student 15 years ago, all right, 20 years ago, a little more than that, and I was told, when we were given statistics, the number-one cause of accidental death in the United States was motor vehicle accident, and the second-most common cause of accidental death was firearms. In the past 10 years, prescription drug overdoses have surpassed that, and that's pretty daunting. So if you could just turn the page. I wanted to kind of just paint a picture for you of what we're talking about. Why are prescription drugs, and we're talking about opioids in this case, but I think it's worth emphasizing, quite frankly, that we're not just talking about opioids. We're also talking about medications like Valium, medications like Norontin. There are lots of other prescription drugs that can be misused. But for the sake of this conversation, let's talk about opioids. So this is heroin, and what you see up there is the chemical structure of heroin, and you don't need to know any more than what it looks like right now. If you just click the button, so these are the chemical structures of two other opioids. There's Oxycontin, and there's Vicodin. Okay? Do the math. As you can see, the chemical structure of them all is essentially the same. There are small differences, and that actually impacts upon... She did it again. Wow. That was cool. I didn't know you could actually do that. But the chemical structure is similar. The effects are similar. You can press it one more time. And the entire class of opioids, which incidentally includes things as simple as codeine, which you'll get in your cough medicine, all have effects on a spectrum that are quite similar to that. But what's the difference? So this is, that's heroin. That's black tar heroin. And when you look at that, you can begin to understand why it's not quite as mainstream. If you could press the button again. That's what Oxycontin looks like, okay? It's a pill. It's prescribed. It's something that your physician would give to you. The effects between the two, when you crush them up, are quite similar, but the stigma associated one with the heroin at the bottom of the screen is quite different. So I want you to think about that. Keep those images in your mind, because I think they're really important when you begin to understand why we are in the situation that we're in right now. So let's talk a little bit more locally. We've talked nationally, we've talked about strategies nationally. This is a really interesting slide. So this is, this is not Democratic and Republican states. This is states where there are more drug-induced deaths versus states where there are more motor vehicle accidents, okay? Orange is drug-induced, okay? And so you can see the ratio, and it's pretty impressive. In our area, more people are dying of drug-related deaths than of car accidents. So it's quite a slide, it's quite telling. And in Massachusetts, the rate's actually higher than in many other states in the country, by at least one percentage point, if not two. And so it's something that we need to keep in mind. And then when we actually drill down even more so, why don't we talk a little bit about our own communities? These are the count of fatal and non-fatal overdoses in a, I believe it's a one-year period.
It's a three-year average.
It's a three-year average. Revere is the 10th highest city in the state. Saugus is the 23rd highest, Chelsea is the 24th highest, and Winthrop is the 43rd, and that's out of more than 350 cities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now, I want my children to be in the highest-ranked school districts. I want to be known to be in the best of many things. I do not want to be in the highest-ranking cities for overdoses, and this is something that we need to think about, and it's something that we need to address. In Revere, you can actually see some interesting statistics about people who have ever used prescription drugs to get high compared to the state average, which you'll see in the first table. But also, in terms of those who've ever used Oxycontin or used Oxycon in the past 30 days, that's 6%. Now, I want to paint an image for you of what that means. So think back to high school. Remember when the bell rang and throngs and throngs of students walked out into the hallways, and they were just passing you and passing you and passing you? One in, how many is that? That's just about one in every 18. One in every 18 students walking by you in the hallway in those throngs has used Oxycontin in the past 30 days. It's a very impressive statistic, and it's something that we need to keep in mind as we have these conversations. Please. High schools, so this is a little bit more data. So in Winthrop, one in every 10 high school students reported to have used prescription drugs to get high at least once in their lifetime. In Revere, 47% of high school students felt that there was no, or there was no or small risk of trying pills once or twice. And in Saugus, about a third of high school students reported that the pills, prescription drugs, not prescribed by a physician for a medical purpose, are easy to obtain. So according to Chelsea's Youth Health Survey, 6% reported that opiates like Oxycontin, they've used them at least once in their lifetime. 40% in Chelsea reported that someone in their family had a severe alcohol or drug problem. 43% reported being offered or given a drug. And then last but not least, 64% indicated their belief that people who use opiates such as Oxycontin or heroin are at great risk of harming themselves. Now, I guess that's an okay statistic until you turn it on its head, right? And that's 46% don't believe that. Forty-six, did I do it right? Thirty-six? Thirty-six. See? Don't panic, I am a licensed physician. Keep going. So I won't go into any more of the statistics, I won't read them off the slides for you, but suffice it to say, in our communities, in the four communities that are represented here, we have a lot to consider and a lot to address. That being said, there's a lot going on right now that's actually really good. There are things going on that can and will make a difference, both now and in the future. Let me talk a little bit about Mass General and primary care and some of the things that have gone on, on the level of our healthcare institutions. There is a state prescription drug monitoring program, which you may mention. It's an online program which allows clinicians to access data on patients and whether or not they're using medications that are prescribed by multiple providers, for example. It is now a state mandate that all physicians be registered on that. It's nice to know that the clinicians, the physicians at Mass General, at least in primary care, had registered on this long before it became a state mandate. In the past year, primary care has actually developed its own policy for both the safe prescribing and monitoring of prescription drugs. You may think that that's a very obvious thing to do, but to reach consensus across a broad swath of providers across our Commonwealth is in fact quite challenging. But I'm very confident and quite happy, frankly, that a program was developed that is now implemented in all of our primary care practices, including those in Revere and the neighboring communities, that are consistent and are safe. Thinking a little bit more broadly, and I know, again, you're going to probably talk a little bit about Narcan, intranasal Narcan, so I won't go into it too much, but in the communities in which you all live and work, there is something now called intranasal Narcan. This is a rescue drug which can be used to reverse overdoses of opioids. And they are now being made available both to families and to first responders, first responders being police and paramedics. And in Revere, they've been using them since February 2010. Can you guess? Give me a guess, and you have to, if you know the answer, you can't say it. How many uses there have been since 2010 in Revere? 111. And 105 of those have been successful. They've saved somebody's life. In Saugus, there have been 12 uses since they started in August of 2013, and they've all been successful. So that's what's going on right now, just in terms of getting programs and resources into our communities. But let's talk about the communities. Let's talk about Revere Cares, for example. Since 2004, and this is in partnership with the Center for Community Health Improvement, we have had an opiate task force, and we obtained a Mass Call Grant back in 2008, and that actually enabled Revere, in this particular case, to enhance its infrastructure, to better enhance, and respond to the needs of local individuals and families. There have been educational trainings, there have been services that are available, recovery coaches, these are things that are available in our communities now. A wonderful partner is North Suffolk Mental Health. Every Tuesday night from 6:00 to 8:00, they have a collaborative, they have a special program where you can go in and learn about how to prevent overdoses, how to navigate the complicated treatment systems, and to have support. You don't need insurance for that. You don't need an appointment. You can just go. It's a resource that's available. And now, what's brought us here? The Massachusetts Opioid Abuse Prevention Collaborative Grant, and that's Revere, Chelsea, Saugus, and Winthrop. And they've come together in something called the Winnis-Cimit Regional Opioid Collaborative to collectively prevent opioid abuse and overdose. And I'd like to thank the leaders of all of those communities for banding together, quite frankly, in what is really an unprecedented initiative. So last but not least, and I'll be done, I want to emphasize that that's the work at hand, but everybody in this room also has both a responsibility and an obligation at your own individual level. If you're prescribed medications, use them the way they're prescribed. Understand why you're getting them, understand the benefits, and understand the risks. Understand the short-term risks, understand the long-term risks. These are not prescribed trivially, and if they are, it's worth a conversation. Talk to your loved ones, talk to your children, know what they're doing, ask them what's going on, be involved with them. If you have those conversations, you will learn things, quite frankly, some of which you don't want to know, but to be engaged in those conversations will make a difference. If you have medications in your home, keep them locked away. You have to do that, it's the sad truth. If you've finished using them, get rid of them, you don't need them anymore. Every one of our communities sponsors Take Back Interventions, okay? Every one of our police departments has a depository where you can return medications, not return, dispose of medications. Use them, know them, make sure that your colleagues and families and friends know about them. And last but not least, if you have a loved one who has issues with addiction, have access to Narcan. Make sure that you have it, talk to your physician, have it in your home. Make sure that you participate in these conversations. When you're done in this room, walk into the other room, take a look at the posters on the wall, take the surveys, be involved in the coalitions. If you do those things, you will make a difference. So again, thank you for your time, thank you for the opportunity to speak here, and I look forward to further conversations.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting me to be here. I feel really lucky to be here with all the people in this room. I want to thank the people who organized this, the prevention coalitions, the mayor, certainly Speaker DeLeo, who's been a huge advocate for substance use treatment and prevention efforts. And so, but most of all, I really want to thank the citizens who are in the room, and this speaks to exactly who you need to sit in a room if we're really going to be able to address this problem. So you need law enforcement, you need the fire department, you need your municipal officials, you need state officials, you need community residents, you need treatment partners, you need your prevention coalitions. And so this is a, this is a great, this is a great set of communities that should be really proud of themselves in terms of their efforts to address this problem and to look at it head-on. So I don't know how many of you, I always ask this question, how many of you by a show of hands have ever heard of the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services? Yeah, not enough. I'm going to be employed for a long time. So the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services works under the, you can get to the next slide, please, thanks, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and these are our major responsibilities. I just want to tell you a little bit about who we are before we talk about what's at hand. So we fund and we license all the treatment programs, substance abuse treatment programs in the state. We fund many of them. We also contract for prevention, treatment, and recovery support services. We license and inspect all those treatment facilities, we license drug and alcohol counselors, and we have overall responsibility for the quality of the care that you receive in the facilities that we license and by the people that we license. We really look at, and Dr. Wile talked about this, we look at addiction as a chronic illness, and so we want to be involved over the lifetime of that illness. So we want to be involved whether someone is actively using and not ready to begin a recovery journey. So those are our intervention efforts, you know, so we talked a little bit about Narcan and the way that it saves lives so that people can live another day to be able to have an opportunity to come into recovery from substances. We also think that, you know, it's an illness that can't be cured, but like all chronic illnesses, it can be managed, and we want to support the management of that illness throughout the entire life cycle, that you need to look at, a lot of things are happening when someone has a substance use disorder, and we need to look at all of that and think about, and help people with all of those issues, that we really need... about, and help people with all of those issues, that we really need to stop looking at, go to detox, oh now you're better, let's move on, and have supports for people who are in recovery, and create healthy communities where people can talk about their recovery and be proud of their recovery status, that no single approach works for everybody, that everybody should keep coming back until it works for them, and that medications are a really, really important part of treating illness, including opiate addiction. And they're, at this point, underused, and what we see is people who use medications, medications like, specifically for opiates medications like methadone, vivitrol, buprenorphine, better known as suboxone, have very good prognosis and very good outcomes. So, we have a budget of about $140 million. We have a, we are blessed to have a governor, a legislature, who really understands substance use disorders, the impact on our communities, and really fights very hard to make sure that we have the money and the budget that we need to treat these disorders, to prevent and treat and support people in their recovery. So we have been very, very lucky to have a lot of support in the legislature for this. Just to show you a little bit, I'm just gonna show you three quick pictures of our treatment system, so we have a whole bunch of acute, most of that $140 million goes right back into the community to pay for different kinds of services. So the Narcan that we're talking about, the Bureau of Substance Abuse Services pays for that Narcan to be distributed in our communities. The treatment services, for those people who don't have insurance, and there are still people, especially amongst substance users who don't have insurance, our money goes to pay for those services for those people, our money goes to pay for, we have four recovery high schools across the state, we have six recovery support centers across the state, so that's what our money goes back out into all the communities to pay for. So this is our detox system, we have a good deal of detox beds. The next level of care that we have, I'm gonna go through that quickly because I really want to talk about the prevention efforts, but the next level of care that we have are residential rehabilitation services. Again, we're fortunate in Massachusetts, a lot of other states have begun to gut their residential treatment services, but this is a state that really supports long-term residential care for people who may need that additional support, can't go right home, need to be in a safe environment while they begin to think about parenting again, while they begin to think about getting a job, returning to school, et cetera. The biggest problem, and then we have our outpatient services, which are probably better known to people when you go see a counselor, you see them once a week, maybe once a month if, you know, if you're going in for wellness checks, and that's where our licensed methadone treatment services fall under this category. We have a very young system, so last year we treated, we had 153,000 enrollments in our system last year. Most of those people, forty percent of the people who got enrolled were between the ages of eighteen and twenty-nine years old. This is very different than what the population looked like a decade ago in our system. And the majority of those people came in with opiate use disorders, so the pharmaceutical drugs that the doctor already talked about, as well as heroin. So, that is the biggest challenge facing us today is the opiate problem, which is not telling you anything, it's why you're all here. This is what the Narcan enrollments look like by these, you know, this coalition, this is who your coalitions represent, and so these are what your Narcan enrollments look like. So that's how many people came to get Narcan at one of our distribution sites. So it's free, just so you know, it's free to you, or to, if you are a person who may witness an overdose, you really, I agree with the doctor, you really want to have Narcan available to you because you can save someone's life. It doesn't take a lot of time to sign up to get it, and, you know, like we said, it's free. But the thing that I'd really like to talk about are our prevention efforts. You need to look at, there are so many things that we all are doing to try to stem the tide of this real, serious public health problem. So, you know, it's already been mentioned that we have the prescription monitoring program. There's mandatory education for all prescribers, so that they have to go when their license is timed to get renewed, to mandatory education on managing pain, opiate addiction, how to recognize it, how to use pain medications appropriately. We have prevention coalitions like you have in your communities that are really outstanding. We have drug take-back days, the kiosks that got talked about in your police stations. We have screening and brief intervention efforts going on in hospitals and in schools to catch those people who are at risk for developing substance use disorders, and to try to help them before they take it full circle. We have the Narcan work that we do, we have, you know, drug courts, we have veteran services, we have homeless services, we have integration into primary care, and Mass General is a great example of integration to primary care. You have other treatment providers in this room here as well, you know, and then we have the recovery support, you know, so the high schools that support kids who need to be in a sober environment to finish their education, as well as recovery support centers, which there are two in the Boston area, and seven in the state, which just support people who are identifying as people in recovery who are looking for a group of social, a social group to connect with outside sometimes of the, you know, twelve-step programs, which are also a really important part of this, to be able to make those positive connections that help them remain sober. So we have a lot of things going on. In terms of prevention, we're here to talk about opiate addiction, but I'm here to say that the thing that you need to prevent is underage drinking. That underage drinking, the younger you are when you begin to drink, the more likely it is that you will also use an illicit substance, meaning a non-medical use of something, or something that's totally illegal and has no medical use, like heroin, you know, the more likely it is. So when you look at this slide, this slide is really powerful to me. If you delay the age of first drinking to the time that you're 21, only nine percent of those people will ever use non-medically or use an illicit substance. However, if you're less than 14 and you start drinking at 14, 47% of those kids are gonna go on to use illicit substances. They are going to be much more likely to develop substance use disorders of every kind, including opiate disorders, over their life cycle. So, it's important for us to be talking about and having lots of efforts to stop opiate prevention, but it starts here, and those are the connections that we often don't make, you know, and sometimes we're in the game just a little bit too late. So, it just really, that's my take-home message for tonight. My other take-home message is our prevention efforts work. So, in 1995, thirty-two percent of kids, well, 31% of kids in Massachusetts were saying that they had used alcohol before they were age 13. So 31% in 1995. When we go all the way down to the right in 2011, that's been cut in half. Fifteen percent of kids across the state are reporting that they're using alcohol before they're 13 years old. That's an enormous gain, that shows you what effective evidence-based prevention programs like you have in these communities can do. And you can also see that we're outpacing the country's efforts on this front, and this is a really important thing, and it's something to really be proud of, I think. So, we've already talked a little bit about the grants that are in these cities to prevent opioid use, and they actually follow what were called Mass Call grants, there used to be different grants, and they, the new grant, the MOPSY grant, we really need a better name for that grant, is something that builds on the Mass Call, and it was a competitive grant, and the cities represented here got that through a competitive process, they wrote a great proposal based on their experience with the Mass Call work. So, again, you know, this is really, this is a set of municipalities that really is leading the way in terms of their efforts to address the substance use problems in the community. This is a list of resources, I brought 150 of these, they're out on one of those tables, and they just kind of, hopefully, would help you if you want to know more about how to help a youth in your area, if you know someone who's pregnant who needs services, if you are a person who works in the field and you'd like to know, or you want to work in the field and you'd like to know more about how we do what we do, our smokers quit line, our Narcan distribution program, and where you can get Narcan in your community, and lots of materials that people can get from our clearinghouse for free. So that's hopefully helpful today, and now we're moving on to you, so thank you.
Usually when I stand up in front of a group of people, I start off by saying, I'm camera man. I have to say, I'm like, I'm hiding very quickly, and I'm not gonna have any, yeah, I just have my story, just like Sarah said, my home. My first, about, in recovery, sad, around 28, 1990, I had your surgeries, and another month. In a few days, I'll have 23 years clean. And that part is important personally, but this morning I woke up clean, and that's the message I want to bring, because I did not think, I knew I wasn't an addict, I did not think that a nurse would be an addict, a nurse was a productive member of society, I wore clean clothes, I did not look like that addict in the street who shot puddle water or toilet water, and the ways and means they had to get their drugs was very, very disgusting to me. It started off for me very simple, I was working one night, I lifted somebody, I hurt my back, somebody said, here, try this. Now, we've heard that tonight, here, try this. I tried it, the pain went away, I was high, I loved it. I chased that high for the next 20 years. I did it a little at a time, my disease progressed each year. When a doctor would prescribe one to two tablets as needed every four to six hours, if you didn't need two, I took home one. If you brought in your medications from home when you were admitted to the hospital, it did not go home with you, it went home with me. The disease talked to me, the pills talked to me, and I thought that I was okay because I wore white scrubs, I'm an old nurse, I wore white, with white hose and white stockings and a cap, and I looked totally acceptable. I was using drugs while raising my children, I have two children who are now adults, but they had no clue because I was so functional. I went to work when I was supposed to, I actually went to work more than I needed to, if they needed somebody, I would stay late. I knew the process of how they were dispensing the drugs in the unit, and I became very, very inept in having that as a different ways and means to get more. I knew when the cartridges were changed, I knew when I would take it, I knew if there was discharges, what to take. I always had drugs, I was very functional, as I said, I was president of the PTA at my child's school, you know, I couldn't stand up in front of a group of people and speak unless I had a substance inside me, and that's a scary thought today, because here I am. I got into the program because the ways and means or the facility I was working with knew that there was a problem happening, they didn't know who, they became more stringent in dispensing, I had to find different ways to get the drugs. And finally, I was asked to come to a meeting, I always hate a conversation that starts, we need to talk, and to me, that's always like a bad sign. I went into a meeting and I walked into a room and they had these stacks of charts, this was the paper age, and they said, we think there's a problem, and I was gonna deny everything. Now, over the, this was over Thanksgiving weekend in 1990, and I had gone to my mother's for Thanksgiving, and I, the drugs that I had, my stash was very, very diminished, and I weaned myself off drugs that weekend and thought I'd be okay. When I got back to work that next week, they said, come on and we need to talk. They brought, as I said, the charts on the table, and they said, we think there's a problem, and I said, I'm not using drugs. And they said, well, we didn't really want to go there yet, but we think that you have a problem. They introduced me to the Substance Abuse Rehabilitation Program with the Board of Nursing. It is a medical professional program, pharmacists, doctors, EMTs, nurses, whoever has access to drugs. They introduced me, very, very strongly suggested that I join the program, I didn't want to do it, but I was afraid that I would lose my nursing license, so I was, you know, willing to do anything to keep that. The program lasted five years, I had to sign a contract. It included peer groups, it included counseling on one-on-one and in-group, and it also mandated five meetings a week to a recovery meeting, NAA, and to have a slip signed, and this was for five years, and I was totally flabbergasted that I was gonna have to sit in a room with alcoholics and addicts for five years. I went to a meeting, I walked in, there was a man setting up, I said, is there a meeting here tonight? He sent me next door to the school that was having a Drum and Bugle Corps meeting, and I asked this little kid, is there a meeting? And she said, Drum and Bugle Corps? And I said, no, no, that's not it. And I went next door again, and I asked, is there narcotics in the honest meeting here? And he laughed and said, you don't look like an addict, and I'm thinking, I'm not. I have found out that addiction is more than just the use of drugs or the misuse of drugs. Addiction is spiritual, it is mental, and it is physical. Once the drugs were out of my system, which took a while, I still felt shaking, and I would go into the meetings and I would listen to the speakers speak, and I would like compare myself, how different I was, that I certainly wasn't like any of these people. And then one day, I was listening to this young man talk about how he was feeling about a situation that happened to him, and the light bulb went on over my head, I understood the feeling, if not the event, and that's what made me realize that, you know, this is something that I need to pay attention to, this is something that I can relate to. And that's what meetings do, going to meetings. I went to the five-plus a week for the five years. Today, I still go to meetings, I go between three and four a week. I've missed my meetings, I was on vacation for a little while, and I'm looking forward to going back. I can go into a meeting of young people, of teenagers, of young adults, of the older than I am, there aren't that many, and I, there's a camaraderie, there's a feeling together that you get, that you understand. Part of the literature says it's like you went through the same catastrophic illness, and that's true, that's the part of addiction that you can't think straight, that it's about feelings, and that I share my feelings so others share with me. The programs are very necessary in my recovery, as well as these other programs that are necessary to help with the recovery process. But I know that for me, I need to still go to meetings after my 22-plus years, it keeps me sane, that when I stop going to meetings, I still hear, like, the volume gets turned up to my addiction. gets turned up to my addiction, I still hear some of the negative thoughts that really can come in and like take me aback. It helps me stay sane, you know, insanity is doing the same thing and expecting different results. And for me, sometimes the insanity is a thought, the three seconds and then saying it and coming out and saying something totally off. So that's my experience, strength and hope. I, I'm so glad that there are programs out, the SAWP program was, was one that, that helped me, but these others that are, that are being formed are going to really be helpful as long as there's support and, and, you know, parental support, spousal support, family support, you know, an addict can, can get clean, stay clean, lose the desire and have a better way to live. Thank you.
Eric and Hillary, I thank you very much for your very informative comments and Pam, thank you so much for sharing your very powerful story with us. I did want to recognize that Jay Ash, the city manager from Chelsea is with us this evening, is in the back. Jay, thank you. And we have a couple of minutes for questions, so if you do have anything on your three-by-five cards, want to jot down a question, please pass them to the aisle. We already do, have received two, so I will field those. First is for Eric and the question is, does Narcan have any negative side effects?
Narcan has--
Here you go.
So Narcan has no, I guess it really depends on who you are. Narcan reverses the effects of an opiate overdose and for a person who is, who is given Narcan, they go into withdrawal and they begin to experience all of the symptoms of withdrawal and that can be a very uncomfortable sensation, but it's not dangerous and it's not permanent. And so having Narcan in and of itself does not put a person at any medical risk.
And then Pam, we have a question for you. What can families do to help people in treatment and/or recovery? Is there anything that your family has done or you've seen other families do that can make a difference in getting people into treatment and keeping them there?
I find that keeping me there, families can, or keeping someone there, just be supportive. Just because somebody has been going for months to meetings and have stayed clean doesn't mean the problem is resolved, it just means that it's in remission.
Any other questions from the floor? All right, well, I'm sure our panelists will be happy to answer some, once the program ends, but please help me thank Eric, Hillary and Pam for putting such a great job. And I think we've all learned in the last few days that every team needs a great closer and so we're delighted to have as a closer tonight, none other than Mayor Dan Rizzo from the city of Revere. As I think people in this room know, he has served in the city council here for six terms and in 2009 was elected city council president. He's chaired just about every committee of, of the city council and was elected mayor of the city of Revere in 2011. It was really under his leadership that the city of Revere took the lead along with those other, with Saugus, Chelsea and Winthrop in, in putting together the Winnisimitt Regional Opoid Collaborative Grant application, which is obviously helping advance this issue in this region. And so please help me thank and welcome Dr. Mayor Rizzo to the podium.
I think I'm one of the few people who's not a doctor in the room right now, so I can understand that mistake, Dr. Slaven, thank you. First of all, thank all of you for being here to discuss this very, very important, serious issue in our communities. Dr. Slaven, thank you for the introduction and also for emceeing tonight. The Massachusetts General Hospital has been a wonderful partner to the city of Revere in addressing a number of health topics, particularly issues related to addiction. Thank you to Mass General for their efforts to prevent and treat prescription drug abuse. I also want to thank all the elected officials who came out this evening and have shown great leadership in addressing prescription drug use in our state and in our region. And that includes Speaker DeLeo, who unfortunately couldn't be here, along with my colleagues from the Winnisimitt Regional Opoid Collaborative. And that includes the cities of Chelsea, he's been mentioned, but our city of Chelsea city manager Jay Ash. I didn't see Scott Crabtree from the town of Saugus, but thanks to him and certainly our good friend Jim McKenna from the town of Winthrop. Many thanks also to General Dean and our panelists, Dr. Eric Wyll, Hillary Jacobs and Pam McDonald, for taking the time to lead this evening's discussion and for educating all of us on prescription drug abuse. Lastly, but most importantly, thank you in the audience who came out this evening to discuss a very important topic that is impacting our entire region. The only way that we will be able to stem the tide of prescription drug abuse in our communities is if we all take action together. Your involvement is a necessary part of the solution. On that note, I'd just like to summarize some of the next steps that will follow after this event. First of all, if you haven't already done the gallery walk in the cafeteria, I would encourage everyone here to take a few minutes to do so before you leave. In the cafeteria, there are posters with important prescription drug abuse data for each of the ROCK, which is, well, it's the Winnisimitt Regional Opid Collaborative, pronounced the ROCK, which is Revere, Chelsea, Saugus and Winthrop. Please go and look at, look at the poster for your community and answer a very short survey with your reactions and comments. The feedback will be used as part of an assessment that is currently taking place in all four, in all four communities as part of the Mass Opoid Abuse Prevention Collaborative, the MOPSY Grant. This regional assessment process will be completed later this fall and will assist our region in identifying pilot strategies that will be implemented in early 2014. The assessment will also be an instrumental, will be very instrumental in setting a long-term strategic plan for preventing and addressing opioid abuse in our region. In the coming months, a grant manager will be hired to oversee the implementation of the MOPSY Grant. This position will sit within Revere City Hall since Revere is the lead community on this grant, but the hiring process will include participation from the leaders in all four ROCK communities. If you would like to continue to be involved in community and regional efforts to prevent prescription drug abuse, I would encourage you to join one of the local coalitions that are working on this issue. Next to each poster in the gallery walk is a table with coalition representatives for each community. Take a moment to introduce yourself to these coalition representatives and ask how you can get involved. Please also make sure that you have shared your contact information at the registration table so you can receive email updates about events related to prescription drug abuse prevention. In closing, I would like to thank all of you again for participating in this evening's event. Please travel home safely and I look forward to seeing you at future events about preventing addiction and supporting recovery in our region. Good night.